City Council Meeting of Wednesday, September 21st, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Keys, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Tru... Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen is absent. Silent meditation?
If you could please stand for a moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all, thankful and grateful that you've allowed us to meet in these chambers. We thank you that our audience is full of residents today. We just ask that by your spirit and your power, you help us to make good decisions on the behalf of the city's residents and the city as a whole. We ask this in your name. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Super kids.
Mr. Keys, we have two presentations today. If you wanted to start with the National Hispanic Heritage Month.
It is re-resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that whereas the City of Erie has just wrapped up a Celebration Welcoming Week, September 9th through the 18th, highlighting our community's rich cultural diversity and commitment to inclusion. Whereas the City of Erie has had a sister-city relationship with Merida Yacatitan, Mexico, since 1971. Whereas members of the Hispanic Latino community have made many contributions to our community in business, in the arts and culture, in faith communities, in education, in social services, and public service, including the election of Jasmine Flores to Erie City Council. So therefore, be it resolved today that Erie City Council is proud to honor Erie's Hispanic Latino residents by proclaiming September 15th as... through the 22nd national... okay, through October 15th, National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Mr. Witherspoon will now announce the Heart of Lion Awards and Special Recognition Awards. Could we have Cameron Curry, age nine, come up? She is receiving the Heart of the Lion Award.
Wow.
Is he gonna need help? Congratulations, Cameron. Jayla Green. Jay Lynn Green. Harmony Thurston. And Coach Nate Overton. This is the Heart of the Lion Award.
Well, the Heart of the Lion Award, I created some time ago. And I usually give one trophy out of all the kids, 200, 300 kids. Those kids get the Heart of the Lion Award because they never give up. And the only person that has the final decision on that is a guy named Spoons. But it's always a guy that's been with me a long time coming up, Jesse. Jesse Tate. They call him JT, and he's called Mr. JT. Now, he's the one that made me to notice what these young people as coaches do. They never miss a game. I'm not sure if they run a game. But they show up and play in the nine-to-ten age group. Well, there was one that stuck in under the wire who was eight years old. And she... and you know that too. So I decided to give all of them a Heart of the Lion Award because they showed them they never quit, that a coach never quit on. That's important. Whatever you do in life, don't quit. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Yes, you... you're not big for... Oh, this guy missed a game too. Okay. Hey, Mom, is this one of yours? Anyway, the league would not happen without these young folks, 19-year-olds. Hopefully, they'll be around until they play into the league that is 16-years-old. I won't be around. JT will be around. But we want to thank you. We want to thank the mayor for making it happen. We'd like to thank our vice president and city council and the members of city council for their support in making this happen as well. We've been doing this for 32 years. Hopefully, it'll go on for another 32. We want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen. There's one young man that's at football practice, Mr. Spencer. We'll make sure he gets his trophy as well. Ladies and gentlemen, the Heart of the Lion Award. May I have your attention, please? She says, "I would like to say something." Okay.
I would like to... I would like to thank Mr. Spoons for letting me join this program. I was shy.
Here comes Cameron.
There you go.
Thank you for letting me play, Mr. Spoons.
Thank you. Now go do your homework.
Is there anyone in the audience here for a repository sale? Repository sale? Anybody here for a repository sale? Okay, Mr. Vice President, we could go on to public comments.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. And this is, hopefully, the camera's picking this up. This is the Parks and Public Space Improvement Survey, also known as participatory budgeting. It's on the city's website. It's on the Facebook page. There's paper copies here. I think it's a nice idea, but it's... this is like a three-page survey, and one whole page of it is demographic questions. The eligible project categories are park improvements, public arts, streetscaping, bike infrastructure, pedestrian safety, and street trees. Doesn't address native plantings, only street trees. Anyway, I'm concerned because under park improvement, it gave a bunch of suggestions. Playground, baseball, gazebo, splash pad, basketball court, benches, picnic table, football field, security cameras, soccer field, running track, walking path, dog park, other. Did not end... the way this is constructed, you can't just say, "I want to see this," and at these parks. You have to... you can only do it for one park per line. I think it's a crazy setup, frankly, but what's missing? Water fountains with bottle fillers? Restrooms? Paved park sidewalks? Not here. And apparently sidewalk repair or installation of sidewalks is only available on city-owned property. So out there in public involvement land, I encourage all of you folks to notice your park. My park, Bowlin Park, doesn't have a sidewalk. Bray Bender Park doesn't have a sidewalk. McClellan Park doesn't have a sidewalk. There are many parks in the city that don't have sidewalks. So I'm suggesting to you to use this opportunity to ask for water fountains, to ask for restrooms, to note where there are no sidewalks, to note the areas that are city property, the Water Authority, the Sewer Authority, the reservoir. Are the sidewalks in disrepair? Tell the city about that. This is your opportunity to do that. Also not mentioned is accessible pedestrian signals. So I'm just encouraging people... only plant or block boxes. They're not really giving an opportunity to talk about native plantings. But most of all, this is a great opportunity to chime in that we need more water fountains. We need more restrooms. There's no restroom, no real restroom in Frontier Park. There's one porta potty up by the tennis courts, and it's not accessible. So please, everybody out there, get the survey, go online, get the paper copy, but really, take a look at your parks. Take a look at your city-owned sidewalks. What's missing? Please use this opportunity to identify those things. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice President, in all the excitement, I forgot to do the motion to accept the minutes from the September 7th meeting and bills for payment on September 23rd and 30th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Tru... Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Keys. Mr. Keys, thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kathy Schoff. I live at 2437 East 43rd Street, and I would like to thank you for your commitment to the City of Erie and everything that you do during your meetings and outside in the community. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Witherspoon and his team and all of the people this summer who had team effort in working with our children. This City of Erie Summer Recreation Guide is second to none. It is awesome. And it really took a lot of planning, I'm sure. I wish I had this as a parent back in my day. It lists all of the parks on the east side, on the west side, and all of the opportunities that parents had to give their children this summer, whether it be tennis, golf, basketball, police community outreach, swimming sessions, art sessions, acting from the Footlights Theater performance, everyone behind the scenes who worked with our youth. And I noticed that you have the number three on the agenda appropriating the sum of $821,502 to be received from the United States Department of Justice as an innovation and community-based crime reduction program grant to be utilized and focused on Erie's east-side neighborhood crime reduction. This is crime reduction right here, working with our youth. It takes time, effort, patience, background checks. Not everybody can do that. Oh, you step up and say, "I want to help." But you need to make sure that the children are safe, so you pick safe adults. And they need to go through different programs before they're accredited to help out. We need more of this, not just in the summer. We need it in the fall and the winter and the spring. We need our community centers open extra hours, perhaps, you know, to encourage that to go into the evening because of some working parents not able to be there for their kids. We want to get away from kids watching kids, kids spending too much time on their phones, and we need interaction with each other. COVID thankfully is going to be passing here and there, and we're getting together more, and people need to understand each other and get along. So I think we need great activities, and perhaps next year, try passing these out. Maybe... I don't know if they give them out into the schools for the oldest member of the family so they could go home or deliver them by mail to the family. I don't know if that happens. So thank you for everyone who works with our youth. That's what it takes. It takes a commitment to the children of our future. That money, though, I don't understand it because I'm just reading it from here. So when... if it passes, if it passes, please let the public know the behind-the-scenes, what this is all about, because we're all curious as to how this money will be allocated. Thank you. Bike racks, number six. I was just in Washington DC over the weekend and saw lots of bike racks. Saw those electric scooters a lot, too, and some had places for them and some had pedestrians tripping over them. So it's good to have bike racks to make sure they're in a place where it's safe, out of the way, so pedestrians and other wheelchairs and things don't happen along on the bikes and the scooters and what have you. So thank you for your commitment to the neighborhood centers, and it looks like the St. Martin Center is going to be receiving money. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Hi. My name is Cole Shenley. I live at 615 Ohio Street, Erie, PA. At the last city council meeting, you voted to overturn the resolution passed in June that would have capped the police complement at 175 as of January 2024, with two members of council reversing their previous votes with no real explanation for their actions. Did the mayor or the chief of police reprimand some of you for your vote? I ask that because all too often, this council seems happy to rubber stamp just about anything both of those men desire. Let's talk about the chief for a second. I found an article from the Gannon Knight that was written in February 2020 by Chloe Forbes that speaks directly to the mindset Chief Spizarni has towards our community. "Poverty and crime are two separate things," Spizarni said. "Is it a direct cause of crime? I don't think so. But it is a symptom of those societal issues that affect crime? Yes. Seeing crime firsthand every day, Spizarni said he rarely ever thinks to himself, 'I know why they did it.'" How can you be chief of the police... how can you be the chief of police of a city and not think about why crime happens? How is it possible for the police to be preventative when their leader almost never stops to figure out why crime is occurring in the first place? That's absolutely appalling. Now, I want to highlight that this article is talking about the correlation between Erie's most impoverished areas and the parts of the city where the greatest amount of crime occurs. There's a strong neighborhood overlap with regards to these two things. You've all heard of redlining, yes? For anyone who doesn't know, redlining was a specific practice by which certain neighborhoods were deemed hazardous to investment, thus denying the people living in those areas access to credit, insurance, and sometimes healthcare. And it even at times led to the creation of food deserts. These were neighborhoods that ethnic and racial minorities primarily lived in and were created in order to keep those poor people poor and segregated from the rest of the population. Do you know where the crime and poverty hotspots were located in this study done by Gannon students? That's right, in the city's most prominent redlined neighborhoods. What this city has seen over the last hundred-something years has been a consistent disinvestment in communities of color, and at least in recent memory, an increased investment in overpolicing and over-surveilling of those communities. This council's pledge to spend $14 million on policing using ARPA funds with the goal of increasing police presence in the lives of our young people and increasing how often police interact with our houseless community members and our community members with mental health struggles. It doesn't matter that the money would be better spent on other programs to help with public safety. It doesn't matter that increased policing doesn't actually bring crime rates down. It doesn't matter that fighting poverty and improving education are the actual silver bullets to reduce crime in our country. This council feels that they know better than all the data and all the researches that study these issues. And let's not get into the complete lack of transparency and oversight over this police department, as the city spends hundreds of thousands of dollars paying out settlements and for insurance premiums due to police misconduct. This year alone, the city is on the hook for close to $700,000 in insurance premiums, up from $400,000 in 2019, according to a right-to-know request that a member of VCU filed earlier this year. I'll quote Kristin Henning, the Bloom Professor of Law and Director of the Juvenile Justice Clinic Initiative at Georgetown Law, who said in an interview that, "What we're finding is that young people who experience, who live in heavily surveilled police neighborhoods, experience high rates of fear, anxiety, hopelessness. Also does a significant impact on a child's sense of themselves, who they are, who they can become, and whether or not it's worth it to even participate in mainstream society." From a different interview with Professor Henning. "We get into the 1990s and we see a temporary uptick in crime, and again, we have politicians who recognize that they can manipulate this purported, this pseudo-scientific theory of black super predators, young people who are supposedly going to run amok and rape, maim, and kill. Politicians recognize for their own gain, they can manipulate this purported link between blackness and criminality, which is flatly refuted. You ask whether policing looks different and or the same? I think it looks different in that it is not as explicit. But here we are in the fear a police officer, a civilian walks through a park, and they see a young black child, and they have the same narrative that the black child must be dangerous, must be a threat." So I'll finish with this. Ultimately, this council, with a couple of exceptions, does not care about the lives of working-class Eriites. It doesn't matter what racial background those working-class people come from. Their needs are not as important as the needs of the wealthy in Erie. Someone here once said that he who has the gold makes the rules, and that appears to be the case with how this council operates. From Lurda to police funding, this council thinks less about the working class and more about how to appease the forces of capital in Erie. You'd rather make your friends in wealthy enclaves like South Shore and Glenwood happy than making real investments into almost impoverished neighborhoods. Erie is not a dystopia, but this council, the mayor, and the chief of police treat it as such, and that's disgusting. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Molly Brechtel. I live at 820 Cranberry Street. I also want to highlight my previous addresses at East Third, East 22nd, and East Eight Streets. All of my 21 years in this city have been spent, lived on the Lower East and West Side. To say I'm immune from gun violence would be a lie. I've mourned friends that I've lost, and I know many who thankfully survived with scars from bullet holes and unresolved trauma. But this isn't a debate about being anti-public safety or pro-public safety, or in the words of Mr. Outlaw, pro-genocide or anti-genocide. We must stop this division. That begins tonight. Erie has a child poverty rate of 44%, and for African-Americans in this city, that goes to 52%. Mayor, we agree with you in this statement that you made in 2017. Mayor, we agree with you in this statement that you made in 2017 about our poverty rate. It's certainly not something to be proud of. It's embarrassing. Actually, it's shameful. And to be honest, it's something we need to change as quickly as possible. I believe that no one in this room would disagree. We all are anti-poverty. Let us unite around that value. But what does that mean? It means accepting that the 20% increase in child poverty from 2005 and 2000 to 2019 is a result of disinvestment from the inner city and those most marginalized in our community. It means prioritizing policies that reduce poverty, such as community benefit agreements, diversity hiring policies like Act 127. It also means investment. Cities such as Chicago, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Harrostown, even Little Jamestown, New York, have invested in universal basic income pilots to eliminate the trifecta of racism, poverty, and violence this year. And what are the benefits of this investment? Reduction of people living below the poverty line, increased ability to meet unexpected expenses and save for emergencies. You want to know why people end up homeless? It's because of those emergencies and those unexpected expenses. Increased income stability, increase in full-time employment, ability to pursue further training and education, ability to seek medical care, significant mental health benefits and stress relief, reduction in both child hunger and child obesity, increases in permanent sustainable housing, and yes, reduction in violent and property crime. We know the challenges of governing the poorest zip code in the country must be difficult. We're not here to point fingers or divide. We're not even here expecting the city to develop all the solutions. The community has a pilot program for a universal basic income project here in Erie. All it would cost is $1.4 million, a small drop in the bucket, considering all the unprecedented ARP funding that this city has received. Mind you, we receive that money because of our poverty rate. Will you, City Council, stand with us? Will you, Mayor Schember, stand with us? And being anti-poverty, will you take action to actually invest in those most marginalized in our city? Will this finally be the mayor and the City Council that reduces our poverty rate? 20% increase in 15 years? Together, united, we can fight poverty and turn the poorest city in the country around. But stop this division and stop the disinvestment. Our city deserves better.
My name is Greg Hayes. I am on the Airport Authority at Erie International. I thank you, Vice Chairman Keys, Council, and Mayor for giving me this opportunity to talk to you.
Could you state your address, please?
I actually live in Edmoral. I'm a council, I mean, I'm a county council appointee.
Could you state your address?
Yes, 5755 Gibson Hill Road, Edmoral, Pennsylvania. And I've, as I said, I am a member of the Erie Airport Authority, and I'm also owner of North Coast Flight School and a 20-year resident of the Erie International Airport. That's that one. I find this very destruct, disparaging. I just received this today, which is something that you've all been handed a copy of, which is a Section 13 investigation into the Erie International. As you can see, going through it, it is quite comprehensive. I took some time here to try to digest it. Like I said, I just received it myself. This was, the letter's dated August 23rd. About two weeks ago, I made a formal request to our Board President and the rest of the board to disseminate this. So we were made aware that there was an investigation, but we were never actually given the information. And you can imagine what that would feel like, you as board members, if there was an action being taken against the city and you were not allowed to have it. How do you defend yourself without having that information? Well, I have it now, and it is quite disturbing. As I read down through this and take a look at everything that they're going through, all the different avenues that they're looking into, now, first of all, let me say, as I said, I've been a 20-year member of the Erie Airport community. Mr. Mayor, you've actually been to my school. You've seen what we do. We do a lot of work with children. We've done, you know, great things, as I consider it, and I'm sure the public would consider that also. We are no longer there, unfortunately. Our lease was discontinued, and we are now at the Meadville Airport, but I still work as a board member on the Erie International Airport. As I look into this, and I was, like I said, I requested not to get involved in the investigation because I understand when there's an ongoing investigation, that's pretty well silent and we don't know. The thing that bothers me most is I asked for this letter, which was the accusation by the FAA, or at least the request for information by the FAA, and I was downright refused. That's kind of hard to understand, especially you as board members on the city council. If you requested something on an investigation, you definitely need to have it, and I understand that. As it goes through, and I take a look at this, there's all kinds of different avenues that they're looking into. And one of the most disturbing things, and this is definitely not as smeared to you, I just spoke with the mayor prior to the, to this meeting, and he wasn't aware of it at all. And I don't know if any of the council members are aware of this as well either. This is the second Title 13 investigation since the starting of the employment of our newest director. The first one was written by a layperson and was summarily dismissed. This, unfortunately, is written by the FAA, and as I said, with me being a 20-year resident of the airport there, I love Erie. Some of the things I just heard, I mean, they're almost heartbreaking as far as to hear it, to hear what you guys have done and how it's improving our city. But let's face it, one of the main key factors in our survival of this city is the survival of our airport. It's a very, very valuable asset. And not only what we've done, and, you know, I can sit there and blow my own horn, but it has nothing to do with that. I want to see Erie International be the shining star that brings people in. We talk about bringing jobs in, we talk about, all of which are pivotal on our airport. If there was a takeover of this area militarily, you know, if there was something like that, what's one of the first things they do? They take over the airport. That's our key to transportation, obviously. One, if I could, just one thing I would like to know, even as far as board appointees, as far as who we have, if I could ask for a ruling on Title 142 as far as the oath of office, none of us have ever taken one. I'm sure you all have. Things like that, we need to know, and we need to all know, and I appreciate your time. I don't want to be a bearer of bad news, but I feel it's something very important for you to know about. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience? We have Jenny Tompkins.
Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? Good evening, Council. I'm hoping you can hear me. My name is Jenny Tompkins. I reside at 665 North Street, Meadville. I'm here to speak in support of a topic that may not be on the agenda this evening but is expected to be addressed in the coming weeks, a city of Erie stormwater fee ordinance. I am the campaign manager for clean water advocacy with Penn Future. Though a resident of Crawford County, my work as a policy advocate focuses exclusively on the Pennsylvania Lake Erie watershed, for which the city of Erie is included. I manage the Our Water Future campaign. I bring together 12 area environmental organizations around a common set of policy and community-based strategies to protect our regional water resources and communities. Our group identified surface runoff, including urban stormwater runoff, as the number-one threat to our water resources regionally. This is demonstrated in the city, where all six of your major streams are polluted enough to be deemed impaired under the Federal Clean Water Act. These waterways have excessive levels of sediment caused by runoff that the city is legally mandated to address under the direction of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. A key strategy that our group identified to curb urban stormwater runoff pollution is the municipal stormwater utility fee. Beyond the potential benefits for water quality, stormwater fees allow municipalities to save costs in the long run by prioritizing infrastructure maintenance and capital improvements. They also enable municipalities to build staff capacity to ensure compliance with state and federal water quality regulations, and they promote public safety and health by addressing infrastructure needs proactively. For example, we had recent multimillion-dollar emergencies caused by failing stormwater infrastructure, primarily on East Fifth Street in 2021. The cost shown for these reactive Band-Aids is much more expensive than proactive plan maintenance and improvements. Emergencies such as these can pose harm to residents and visitors. The city's proposed stormwater fee is an equitable solution that charges a rate based on the amount of built impervious surfaces on all properties, including those of tax-exempt and public entities. This importantly means the fee is kept low for homeowners because their share of impervious surface is low comparatively. In fact, the city is proposing the second-lowest fee in the Commonwealth per unit area. Penn State Extension cites on their website that the average, that the range of resident costs for stormwater fees in Pennsylvania is between $5 and $11 per month. However, the city of Erie is proposing a range from $1 to $3 per month for residential ratepayers. A vote on a stormwater ordinance failed last fall, with those in opposition citing a lack of concrete information about a credit policy that would allow property owners to receive a discount on their fee bill for implementing projects that reduce stormwater impacts. I attended your recent council study session to learn about the draft credit policy created in response to those concerns, and I absolutely support the proposed policy. With the collaboration of an accomplished consulting firm and a committee of area experts over the last year, this draft credit policy was created in alignment with other PA stormwater fee programs. The draft stormwater fee policy generously provides for up to 45% in annual credit and rightfully upholds design standards for best management practices that ensure the city remains compliant with state and federal regulations. Because the city's fees are designed to be comparatively low, an annual cap on credit was established to ensure the city collects enough revenue to reach its stormwater compliance and maintenance goals. Thanks to the city's stormwater consultants, the work of staff, and the group of citizen volunteers, a reasonable and effective stormwater fee policy is ready to implement down to each required application form for ratepayers. Despite the advice of several past strategic planning consultants, the city has not been able to implement a fee. Despite the fact that over 35 municipalities in Pennsylvania have stormwater fees, including our urban counterparts in Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Allentown, Bethlehem, Lancaster, Easton, and nearby Meadville where I reside, as leaders of the only Pennsylvania city situated on the largest freshwater system in the world, I encourage you to vote yes to create a stormwater fee program. Investing in clean water now will save money in the long run. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening.
Okay, I think we can move on to ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16307, Official Ordinance Number 482022, An Ordinance Extending the Term of the Existence of the Erie Parking Authority for an Additional Period of 50 Years, Authorizing and Directing the Proper City Officials to Take All Action Required to Implement the Purpose of This Ordinance, Repealing Any Inconsistent Ordinances, and Providing for the Effective Date Hereof. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, Seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16307, and now known as Official File Ordinance 482022, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Keys. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 482022 by yea six nay zero. Council File Number 16309, Official Ordinance 502022, An Ordinance Increasing the Compensation of the Erie City Council Members, Repealing Any Inconsistent Ordinances, and Providing for the Effective Date Thereof. Whereas pursuant to Section 11106 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, Ordinance 841984, Erie City Council will receive the following annual compensation: $10,000 for council members and $12,000 for council president. The new compensation rate shall apply to all council members who are elected or re-elected to a term of office and who take such office after January 1st, 2024.
Mr. President, may I have a word? Before we vote on this, I would be disingenuous if I voted yes for this. I am, the mayor and I, agreed to disagree on fees. I fought not to have the garbage in the sewer fees raised last budget. As long as there are ARP funds out there that we can move around somehow, I will continue to fight for those fees. Having said that, I have to be a no vote on this salary increase. How, in good conscience, can I vote for more money to be spent when I'm fighting to spend less money? You have my no vote.
Council File Ordinance Bill-
Any, any other comments that you want?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I as well will be voting no. I have fought for an increase two different occasions, and I feel it's well-deserved. However, I agree with Councilman Brzezinski, and I have to vote no at this time.
Call for the vote.
Council File Ordinance 16309, now known as Official File Ordinance 502022, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski-
No.
Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup-
No.
Mr. Witherspoon. Council failed to pass Official File Ordinance 502022 by a tie vote of yea's three, nay's
Question. For the attorney, it's been voted on once, approved once, and disapproved once. Where do we go?
Good question. So the ordinance fails to pass. It could be brought up again, and certainly with the absence of a council member, it would not surprise me that it gets brought up again for finality. We have three and three. We don't know what the seventh vote would be, but as of now, the ordinance dies, it would have to go back to the beginning. But as of now, the ordinance dies, it would have to go back to the beginning. If you really brought up for first reading.
Thank you.
Council File Number 16310, Official Ordinance 512022, And Appropriating the Sum of $821,502 to Be Received from the U.S. Department of Justice as an Innovations in Community-Based Crime Reduction, a CBCR Program Grant, and will be utilized to focus on the Erie Eastside Neighborhood Crime Reduction. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Trup, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16310, and now known as Official File Ordinance 512022, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 512022 by Yea Six Nay Zero. Council File Number 16311, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $30 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from donations made in the memory of William Mosky. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Trup, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16311, and now known as Official File Ordinance 522022, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Keys. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 522022 by Yea Six Nay Zero. We have an ordinance for first reading. Council File Number 16312, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $41,865.30 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from Servery for Park and Streetscape Improvements. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys. That's Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16312, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Keys. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance 16312 by Yea Six Nay Zero on first reading. We have two items under Old Business. Number one, pursuant to the recommendation from the City Planning Commission in a public hearing held on Wednesday, September 7th, 2022, at approximately 9:30 a.m. in City Council Chambers, 626 State Street, a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by Diamond Design Construction on behalf of Lance Bessner and Marissa Hughes for the construction of a single-family dwelling located at 249 East Second Street, parcel ID 141009211, be hereby approved. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon. Passes Yea Six Nay Zero. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Erie pursuant to the recommendation from the City Planning Commission of Public Hearing held on Wednesday, September 7th, at approximately 9:30 a.m. in City Council Chambers, 626 State Street, a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by Donald Morphy for the construction of a single-family dwelling located at 463 West Front Street, parcel ID 1741122, be hereby approved. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Keys. Motion passes, Yea Six Nay Zero. Mr. Vice President, this takes us to New Business.
Motion to move the balance. Second.
Any separations?
One.
Number one?
Yes.
Any other separations?
Yeah, make a... Two, three, and four. Well, we'll just say three. Yeah, let's, let's just do three. They all are in reference to the same thing.
Any other? Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Keys. We have number one in New Business. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, the City of Erie has just wrapped up a celebration of Welcoming Week, September 9th to 18th, highlighting our community's rich cultural diversity and commitment to inclusion. And whereas the City of Erie has a sister-city relationship to Merida, Yucatan, Mexico since 1971, whereas members of the Hispanic-Latino community have made many contributions to our community in business, in arts and culture, in faith communities, in education, in social services, and in public service, including the election of Jasmine Flores to Erie City Council. So therefore, be it resolved that today Erie City Council is proud to honor Erie's Hispanic-Latino residents by proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Discussion?
This might be highly irregular, but can I call for a moment of silence for those poor folks in Puerto Rico? Who are, we don't know what they're doing because there's thirty inches of water down there. Beautiful, beautiful country. Dominican Republic also. So if we can have that moment. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just to remember them in your thoughts and your prayers, the Caribbean Islands, which a lot of Latino and Hispanic people live, going through a hurricane at this current time.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Keys. Resolution passes, Yea Six Nay Zero. We have a resolution sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the mayor and other appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Erie and the St. Martin Center, whereby the city will make available Emergency Solution Grant, ESG, funding in the amount of $87,933 to carry out the designated activity outlined in the amended FY21 ESG Plan. I believe that's fiscal year '21. Discussion?
Just a discussion. One, it's always disheartening to see when we give funds to a particular organization that they do not exhaust the funds for whatever reasons, and they have to be given to somebody else. That being said, I, you know, hope that we do a better job. And two, I hope with the additional funding, that's a considerable amount of funding, and to my detriment, I do not have the amended plan. So I don't know exactly how the extra $180,000 is going to be spent. But I, it's my hope that it's well spent.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Keys. Resolution passes, Yea Six Nay Zero. Mr. Vice President, this takes us to committee reports. I think we have Ms. Stankovich on the line as well, not to forget her.
What's that? Oh, excuse me. Let's start with you since you spoke up, sir. And we'll just go right along.
All right. Committee report, yesterday was the Sewer Authority meeting. They, just a couple of years ago, issued a new bond, so they have a whole plan, like a five-year plan of capital expenses. The timing of that has worked out perfectly with the infrastructure bill, ARP money, and Penn Vest coming through. But now it's looking like they're, that they've got a whole bunch of shovel-ready projects. A large portion of yesterday's meeting was talking about what can be brought to Penn Vest to get outside funding, either as grants or as no-interest loans, available. And they think that they have a number of very, very good shovel-ready projects. They're going to be meeting with someone about those, and that once they get into the application process after meeting with this person, it's 100% success rate. They'll get something. So they're, they're very optimistic about that, and referring to this as really a rare opportunity for this to be coming through. The bond working out where they just happen to have all three of those revenue sources coming at the same time. The idea of having shovel-ready projects ideas already in place when extra funding comes from the outside, so that we don't have to use all of our money on it, is, is a really good thing for, for any department. On October 1st, Jamestown, New York, is opening a, is unveiling a half-million-dollar skate park. That's irrelevant to us. I'm just reporting on Erie news. But that is coming with half of the funding from the Tony Hawk Foundation. So on September 30th, I'll be with Public Works, meeting with some members of the skateboarding community to discuss Columbus Park and meeting with the person that executed that grant for Jamestown. It's a matching grant, and so, you know, it's some, with some combination of, you know, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, maybe ARP, maybe, you know, what, maybe fundraising. There may be an opportunity for us to have the same sort of development that Jamestown's had at our Columbus Park, which is in a qualified census tract. I missed out on letting you guys know last time, but with the Pennsylvania Authority had its convention here in Erie, and the Water Authority's director received the highest honor there. And this Saturday, on a personal slash public note, this Saturday is Porch Fest. In the West Bayfront neighborhood, we will have, it looks like about 50 musicians, 17 acts, starting at 11 a.m. at Strong Vincent with Life Through Music. And then there's another act at 11 that's opening at... Oh, thank you, The Breeze Band. Yeah, yeah, I haven't heard of them. And that'll go, that'll go straight through the day with the finale being at 5:30 at the Hagan Historic Society. So all day, come out. The EMTAs donated a trolley, so you could ride along on that. Gridley Square is gonna have, Gridley Park's gonna have Erie Ale Works and some food trucks out there. But just porches through the whole neighborhood, live music. All right? That's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a point of information. The Lyft program is looking for drivers. I was told they had around 40 or 42 applications, and only four showed up for the interview. They are running behind schedule, no fault of their own. One of the problems they have is they have a guideline from PennDOT as well as their guidelines, and they do do a background information check. And if you have, you know, a lot of tickets on your driving record, that'll disqualify you. And the reason I mention that, because I utilize the Lyft. And they pick me up around 5:45 in the morning, take me to the gym and, and workout, and my schedule to return home is between 9:00 and 9:30. Well, I sat at the gym until 11:52 because they didn't have a ride to pick me up, which prompted me to cancel the rest of the week because I wouldn't want to get stuck out there again. And I did talk to the supervisor, and they're doing the best they can. So if, if you're looking for a job and you have a good driving record, fill out the application, and if you get an interview, please show up. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, I don't have a report today. Mr., uh, yeah, Ms. Flores.
The Bladed Property Authority is still accepting applications. I did have a few people email me to let me know that they have submitted, so Lori, me, and you will be touching base on that. I'm not quite sure how I would get that information. I do know that, I'm very appreciative of the city recognizing Latino and Hispanic residents, but we have so much more that we need to do with the community. They don't feel included, and that's because there has never really been any follow-through. I would love to see a Latino council formed, so if we can get that in, you know, in motion, that would be great. We had a new American council turnover pretty quickly. I would, I would love to see that happen as well, especially right now with a lot of our island cultural Latino people experiencing so much hardship. If we had a little bit more organization, we would actually be able to maybe get donations and send aid to our island, but because we have not had anywhere to formally organize or communicate with one another, it's kind of hard to push that forward. So right now, there's a lot going on with Hurricane Fior, Fiora? Fiona, yes, there we go. So we definitely have to keep them in mind. There's a lot of sensitiveness going on right now, so just be conscious on where people might be. And as far as anything else, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
I guess it's me. Nice job. When you talk about the Hispanic community, you better not forget a guy by the name of Mr. Reyes, Julio Reyes. He's a gentleman that bought the Manacor and brought it back alive. My wife and I stopped in there about a week or so ago, just to grab a quick bite to eat. He gave us a tour of the place. You could eat off the floor now. He's cleaned it up so well. And we were talking about Hispanic, Latino art. If you are around that Manacor area, drive into the parking lot on the south side of the building and look at the things that he already has, the glasswork. Hawk Williamson, he was a, he was one of my baseball coaches at East High, but he was also an art teacher, has made some just beautiful things there. And the food is real good. That's my Hispanic comment. The other thing I have to say is, I gotta put some thank yous out. On Monday, we honored one of the greatest citizens of our city that I can ever remember knowing, that's Mr. Tom Hagan. There are a lot of people to be thanked. I hope I don't miss anybody. Mr. Nacastro and the engineers over at Erie Insurance designed a beautiful, beautiful corner for Mr. Hagan. Mr. Carl Anderson did a lot of historical background on that. Can't forget to thank Mr. Brennan, who was no longer on council, but continued kind of riding the waves to get this thing put together. Our city people did some nice work. Mrs. Judy Houston from the Women's Club hosted- Mrs. Judy Houston from the Women's Club hosted a very nice luncheon. I missed it, I, I can miss meals, it doesn't hurt me, but I did have another appointment that I had to get to. And I think the final thank you is, again, to thank Mr. Hagan for being Mr. Hagan, one wonderful guy. Thank you and good night, have a nice weekend.
Well, I'd just like to thank my colleagues for entrusting me to run the meeting tonight. All seemed to have gone well, and that's my report. Oh, excuse me, oh. It's my report, but we still have a report from the mayor.
I'll be very brief too.
Oh, she's, is she on?
I just wanna, I'm sorry. I just want to take a moment to thank all of you on City Council. I really value and respect all, every one of you, and look forward to building, I'd like to build a very close working relationship with, with all seven of you. And I'm available to you anytime. I think you all have my cellphone, if you don't, I'll give it to you tonight. That's the best way to get directly in touch with me. I encourage you, call me on my cellphone or text me, and, and we can talk. And, you know, if we don't always agree, that's, I think that's a good thing, actually. The more diversity we have speaking into things, we can talk it through, and there may be things we just don't agree on. My approach to that, I just want to say, okay, we've talked it through, we understand each other, we don't agree, but let's just set that aside. Let's work hard on the things that we do agree on. I, I really value diversity, we have great diversity now reflected in City Council, and I'm very, very happy about that. So I feel like, I don't know, I want a better working relationship than, than we have right now. Not that there's anything wrong with it, but I just, I want to work more closely with each and every one of you, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Thanks very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Is Teresa on? Oh, well, if all minds are clear as they, let's say good night.
City Council adjourns at eight-thirty-nine p.m. Mr. Brzez, Mr. Keys, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.